Motion to exit. Vice counsel. Motion second to exit the vice counsel.
Okay.
Go back on the record.
Are we on the record?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to exit advice of counsel session.
Second. All the way.
Right.
I oppose staying, motion's carried and now we're back in the regular session.
Okay. Alright, so a draft uh resolution has been circulated to the board, has everyone had the opportunity to review it?
Yes.
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 Great, so let's go through each section of the decision. Has everyone reviewed the procedural history?
Yes.
Yes.
And does everyone agree that it is the procedural history that we've been discussing?
Yes.
Are there any comments or modifications that we wanna make to the procedural history?
No.
Has everyone reviewed the record of the evidence?
Yes.
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 Does everyone agree? The record of evidence?
Yep.
Are there any changes or modifications to be made?
No, no.
Has everyone reviewed the pertinent facts?
Yes.
Yes.
Does everyone agree uh that the pertinent facts?
Yes.
Are the? Facts.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Are there any changes or modifications to be made?
No.
And has everyone reviewed the zoning board jurisdiction and authority?
Yes.
Yes.
Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any changes or modifications to be made?
No.
Has everyone reviewed the guidance from the New York State?
Yes.
Does everyone agree that? We've been provided with the guidance?
Yes.
Yes.
And are there any changes or modifications to be made?
No.
Has everyone reviewed the interpretation of town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C?
Yes.
Yes.
Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any changes or modifications to be made?
No.
No.
Has everyone reviewed the conclusion decision of this board?
Yes.
Yes.
Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any changes or modifications to be made?
No.
Okay, great, I'm gonna read the draft resolution in its entirety on the third.
Starting at whereas.
Okay. Whereas the applicant Magnum Properties Company LLC came before the zoning board appeals on June sixteenth two thousand twenty-five, July twenty-first two thousand twenty-five and August eighteenth two thousand twenty-five, seeking an then an appeal interpretation from a notice of violation issued by the town of DeWitt Planning and Zoning Department through its code enforcement officer on April fifteenth two thousand twenty-five. And whereas a public hearing was held on June sixteenth two thousand twenty-five, tabled, continued and closed on July twenty-first two thousand twenty-five with a decision to be rendered within sixty-two days of the close of the public hearing pursuant to town law, section two sixty-seven dash A eight and now, therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals adopts the following signings and decisions.
Skip that part and just.
Okay. Alright, so the background and procedural history is as follows. Applicant Magnum Properties Company LLC herein after the applicant represented by attorney Kathleen Bennett asked, uh here and after referred to as attorney Bennett, submitted an application to the zoning board of appeals on May twenty-seventh two thousand twenty-five, an appeal of a notice of violation issued by the town of DeWitt Planning and Zoning Department, here and after the department, and dated April fifteenth two thousand twenty-five. Also attending relevant proceedings on behalf of the applicant authority Smith, ask here and after attorney Smith and Marco. Esquire, yeah, sorry. And Marco Marzucci Director of Development for the Wide Waters Group Inc. and managing agent of the applicant here and after Mr. Marzucci. The notice of violation was issued after the department, according to the violation became aware of illegal land clearing performed by the applicant without a site plan review and a development permit as required by the DeWitt Town Code Sections one ninety-two, one oh seven C two and C four on cer- on a certain parcel of land owned and maintained by the applicant, a tax-mapped parcel ID zero four three dash zero six dash zero seven point two located on Kirkville Road in the town of DeWitt. The applicant, following the receipt of violation, submitted an application on May twenty-seventh two thousand twenty-five to the zoning board of appeals here and after the zoning board. An appeal of the violation arguing that the work done on the property by the applicant did not amount to clearing and requested an interpretation of the DeWitt Town Code Section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C. The zoning board properly noticed and conducted a public hearing on this matter on June sixteenth two thousand twenty-five. The applicant appeared, represented by attorney Bennett, and was given the opportunity to submit and all any and all documentation to the record in support of its case and present its argument before the zoning board. The zoning board heard the applicant's arguments and engaged in discussion amongst themselves and with the applicant. As the full zoning board was not present for the public hearing, the board resolved to table the discussion, leaving the public hearing open to be continued at the next meeting. The zoning board met next on July twenty-first two thousand twenty-five and continued the public hearing in its review of the applicant's request for interpretation. Again, the applicant represented by attorney Bennett was given the opportunity to submit any and all documentation to the record in support of its case and was given the opportunity to present its arguments before the zoning board. So the zoning board engaged in continued discussion and with the applicant being given every opportunity to be heard and submit documentation to the record and with the public being given every opportunity to be heard, resolved to close the public hearing. Attorney Natoli noted that pursuant to the New York State Town Law Section two sixty-seven dash A eight, the zoning board has sixty-two days from the close of the public hearing to decide on the appeal. The zoning board next met on August eighteenth two thousand twenty-five with the full zoning board present and continued its discussion of this matter with the goal of producing a rational and reasonable interpretation of town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C based upon the substantial evidence gathered in the record. The applicant appeared for the meeting represented by attorney Smith and even after the close of the public hearing was given the opportunity by the zoning board to speak and continue to make its case in support of an interpretation against the department. The board engaged in discussion amongst themselves and with the applicant. After the discussion ended and the applicant had been given in every opportunity to be heard, the board resolved to close the meeting. Attorney Natoli stated that the board would review all of the substantial evidence in the record, contemplate all discussion between all relevant parties at all three meetings of the zoning board in regard to this application, and issue a decision at the next meeting of the zoning board on September fifteenth two thousand twenty-five within the sixty-two day statutory requirement of town law Section two sixty-seven dash A subsection eight. At the close of the public hearing on July twenty-first two thousand twenty-five, after the applicant was given every opportunity to submit any and all additional evidence to the record, the record of evidence in this matter for review of the zoning board and its interpretation consisted of the following. One, application submitted by the applicant on May twenty-seventh two thousand twenty-five. Two, written interpretation requests signed by attorney Bennett and dated May twenty-seventh two thousand twenty-five. Three, stop work order issued by the department to the applicant dated February twenty-first two thousand twenty-four. Four, notice of violation issued by the department, the applicant dated April fifteenth two thousand twenty-five. Five, written response to the notice of violation signed by Marco Marzucci and dated May fifth two thousand twenty-five. Six, photo history of land clearing slash tree cutting efforts by the applicant from two thousand two through two thousand twenty-four. Seven, letter to the zoning board signed by Marco Marzucci and dated July twenty-ninth two thousand twenty-five. Eight, planning board minutes dated March ninth two thousand seventeen showing site plan review of tree cutting by National Grid. Nine, letters from attorney Nadine Bell Esquire here and after attorney Bell requesting a tree cutting and clearing permit dated March eighteenth two thousand twenty and related permit applications signed by property owner owner Marco Marzucci and his capacity as director of development for the Wide Waters Group Inc. and managing agent for Magnum Properties LLC in regard to the project Orange Development at six eight three four Kirkville Road. Pertinent facts are as follows, the zoning board has carefully considered documentation submitted to the record and all verbal comments made during the public hearing and the following pertinent facts have been noted. One, the zoning board finds that the applicant has historically engaged in cutting of living trees on the relevant parcel. The applicant admits in their application and in their comments at the public hearing to cutting living trees in a certain area of property. Pictures submitted to the record by the applicant show various phases of cutting of living trees on the parcel from two thousand two through two thousand twenty-four. At no point in time during these proceedings did the applicant argue or assert or represent that they did not historically engage in cutting of living trees on the relevant parcel. Zoning uh two, the zoning board finds that the applicant has historically engaged in the cutting of living trees substantially down to the stump but did not engage in the removal of stumps or extrication of roots. Pictures pictures submitted to the record by the applicant, supported by the applicant's verbal comments at the public hearing, show various phases of cutting in the subject area on the relevant property from two thousand two through two thousand twenty-four, showing areas where living trees have been systematically cut down by the applicant and left on the ground in order to create and or maintain an area free of living trees on the relevant parcel. The zoning board accepts the applicant's claim that the applicant did not engage in the removal of stumps or extrication of roots in the subject area. Three, the zoning board finds that the department and town of DeWitt Planning Board have historically engaged in a site plan review and issuance of a development permit for tree cutting without any stump removal or root extrication. Planning board minutes, extraction, excuse me, planning board minutes from March ninth two thousand seventeen added to the record show that the planning board engaged in a site plan review and issued an approval for tree cutting by applicant National Grid, where the cutting shall involve trees only, no shrubs or other plantings, no rubbing or stump removal is permitted. Four, the zoning board finds that the DeWitt Town Board, when it established its code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C in two thousand eight, intended in plain language to regulate clearing of land in residential districts and non-residential districts. Five, the zoning board finds that specifically for parcels in non-residential districts, the town board stated in plain language in section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C subsection two and C subsection four, a requirement for site plan review and issuance of a development permit for all clearing of land in non-residential districts. Six, the zoning board finds that the town board defined clearing of land in section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C subsection one as the removal of living trees and provided specific exceptions to the definition of clearing. Seven, zoning board finds that the town board created four clear and distinct exceptions to the definite definition of clearing in section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C subsection one. These exceptions listed in the plain language as not included in clearing are as follows, one, the selective removal of trees as part of an approved forest management plan. Two, the removal of dead trees. Three, the removal of trees posing a hazard. And four, the pruning of trees. There are no other exceptions to the clearing list in section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C subsection one. Eight, the zoning board finds that its town board explicitly did not create an exception to the definition of clearing in section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C subsection one for the cutting of trees as cutting of living trees is not included or mentioned or described anywhere within the four exceptions to the definition of clearing in one section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C subsection one. The zoning uh nine, the zoning board finds that the applicant's cutting of living trees do not involve the selective removal of trees as part of an approved forest managed plan. Forest management plan, excuse me. The applicant has not argued or asserted or represented and the record does not show that the applicant's cutting of living trees was done in this matter and there it is therefore accepted from the definition of clearing. As far as the zoning board is aware, the applicant has not submitted to the record or presented an approved forest management plan for the zoning board to review. Ten, the zoning board finds that the applicant's cutting of living trees did not involve the removal of dead trees. The applicant has not argued or asserted or represented and the record does not show that their cutting of living trees was the removal of dead trees and is therefore accepted from the definition of clearing. Eleven, the zoning board finds that the applicant's cutting of living trees did not involve the removal of trees posing a hazard. The applicant has not argued or asserted or represented and the record does not show that the applicant's cutting of living trees were done for reason of certain trees posing a hazard and is therefore accepted from the definition of clearing. Twelve, the zoning board finds that the applicant's cutting of living trees did not involve the pruning of trees. The applicant has not argued or asserted or represented and the record does not show that the applicant's cutting of living trees was merely the pruning of trees and is therefore accepted from the definition of clearing. Thirteen, the zoning board finds that the town board did not, in its plain language, require stumps and or roots to be removed or extracted or an action to be defined as clearing under section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C subsection one. Subsection one ninety-two dash one oh seven C subsection one does not note, discuss or mention stump and or root removal or extraction at all and does not create any direct or implied requirement for those activities to occur to occur in order for an action to be considered to be clearing. Zoning board's jurisdiction and authority. Pursuant to DeWitt Town Code Sections one ninety-two dash one eighteen subsection J, subsection one, the zoning board of appeals has the jurisdiction and authority to hear and decide appeals?
Sorry, I had two section signs there.
Oh, okay. Uh, should I?
Small type, small type, I'll keep going.
Okay. Has the jurisdiction and authority to hear and decide appeals from and review orders, decisions or determinations made by the department? Further pursuant to section one ninety-two dash one one eight subsection J, subsection four, okay, and the New York State Town Laws, section two sixty-seven dash B, subsection one, the zoning board of appeals may reverse or affirm wholly or partly or modify the order requirement, decision, interpretation or determination as in its opinion ought to have been made in the matter by the administrative official charged with the enforcement of such ordinance or local law and to that end shall have all the powers of the administrative official whose order requirement, decision, interpretation or determination the appeal has taken. Guidance from New York State. The New York State Department of State has issued guidance for the zoning board of appeals to rely on in considering appeals to the board and interpretations of the town code updated and reprinted as recently as two thousand twenty-four. Where there are no prior decisions and or interpretations of this particular town code section by the zoning board for the zoning board to rely on, the zoning board of appeals should attempt to determine the governing board's original intent in enacting the provision in question. And arriving at its determination, the zoning board of appeals should consider prior documentation such as minutes of governing board meetings, testimony of local officials and planning advisory documents which may have accompanied the enactment of the relevant town code section. Regardless of the type of action appealed from the zoning board may interpret the language of the zoning regulations, apply it to the facts before it and render a decision. The zoning board shall make such order, decision or determination as in its opinion ought to have been made in the matter by the administrative official charged with the enforcement of the zoning regulations. Interpretation of town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C. The zoning board in reviewing and interpreting town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C, following the guidance of New York State for consideration of appeals to the zoning board and interpretations of the town code. In this matter, there are no prior interpretations of section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C in the zoning board's history for the zoning board to rely on. However, the record includes a decision of the town of DeWitt Planning Board dated March ninth two thousand seventeen in which it considered a clearing action by applicant National Grid. In that case, the planning board engaged in in site plan review and approved an application for cutting and clearing with conditions stating that the cutting shall involve trees only, no shrubs or other plantings and no rubbing or stump removal is permitted. The clearing is intended to be minimal to accommodate the timeframe relating to the Indiana bats. The zoning board finds the planning board resolution dated March ninth two thousand seventeen to be persuasive for the following reasons. One, the resolution shows that the town of DeWitt has historically engaged in site plan review for cutting of trees. Two, the resolution shows that the stump removal was not permitted as a part of the approved clearing action illustrating that the town of DeWitt does not and has never required stump removal to occur for a clearing action to take place. And three, the resolution shows that even minimal clearing has historically been subject to site plan review and approval by the planning board as required by town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven sub- subsection C subsection four. Next, the zoning board looked to determine the DeWitt Town Board's original intent in enacting the provision in question. Current town supervisor Ed M. McAlanco PhD appeared at the public hearing on July twenty-first two thousand twenty-five and asked to speak specifically to the question of the town board's original intent in enacting section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C. Supervisor McAlanco was recognized by the zoning board and stated that he had been the town supervisor in two thousand eight when town code section one ninety-two, one oh seven was passed and that he had personally brought this lot to the town board for review and approval approval. Supervisor McAlanco reviewed his extensive experience with environmental topics, specifically his deep knowledge and care for trees in general and that he has reviewed all the town of DeWitt's efforts in the area of tree planting and preservation. Supervisor McAlanco discussed extensive tree planting and preservation efforts made by the town during his tenure as supervisor. Supervisor McAlanco argued to the zoning board that the intent of the DeWitt Town Board in enacting town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven was precisely to prevent indiscriminate cutting and removal of living trees without town approval in non-residential districts. Supervisor McAlanco made clear that the intent of the local law at the time it was passed was to prevent the cutting and removal of living trees and that the town of DeWitt regulates these actions in regard to the cutting and removal of living trees with the goal as preserving as many trees as possible until a site plan is in place for the land to be developed. The zoning board finds Supervisor McAlanco's verbal comments to the board during the public hearing on July twenty-first two thousand twenty-five, although not sworn testimony and not relied on as pertinent facts of the case are persuasive and helped to educate the zoning board on the narrow issue of the town board's intent in two thousand eight when enacted when it enacted town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C for the following reasons, one, supervisor McAlanco's comments indicate that the town board, when it approved town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven in two thousand eight, intended to prevent the cutting and removal of living trees in non-residential districts until a site plan approval was in place and development permit issued. Two, supervisor McAlanco's comments indicate the town board during his tenure as supervisor had has had a clear goal and intent to prevent exactly the type of cutting activity the applicant in the case of engaging in in the notice of violation. And three, supervisor McAlanco's comments indicate that the town board intended for the cutting of trees to be included in the definition of clearing when it established section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C. If the town board wanted to make cutting of living trees an exception to clearing, it would have done explicitly so. Finally, the zoning board looked at the plain language of town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C and applied it to the facts before it. Okay. Town code uh section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C regulates the clearing of land. Section one ninety-two, one oh seven subsection C, section one states that clearing is defined as the removal of living trees and clearly and plainly defines exceptions to do the definition of clearing, including the selective removal of trees as part of an approved forest management plan, the removal of dead trees, the removal of trees posing a hazard and the pruning of trees significantly cutting of trees. Oh, excuse me, is not listed as an exception to the definition of clearing. By not affirmatively stating an exception to the definition of clearing for cutting of living trees, it can be fairly presumed by the zoning board that the town board clearly intended that the cutting of living trees be included in the definition of clearing and that the cutting of living trees constitutes the functional removal of living trees. Further, section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C one does not include any mention of stump and or root removal and or extraction as part of the definition of clearing. Certainly, the town board did not intend for stump and or root removal and or extraction to be a requirement for an action to constitute clearing. If the town board had intended stump and or root removal and or extraction as a requirement or an action to constitute clearing, it would have clearly and specifically stated so in the town code. By explicitly not stating that a clearing action requires stump and or root removal and or extraction to be considered clearing, it can be fairly presumed by the zoning board that the town board did not intend to require stump and or root removal and or extraction to be a requirement of clearing. Section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C or two states that in all non-residential districts and residential R-three districts, a development permit is required in order to clear land. The zoning board finds this subsection clearly and plainly states that a development permit is required in order to clear land in non-residential districts and residential R-three districts. The town board clearly intended that any clearing of living trees that is not the selective removal of trees as part of an approved forest management plan or removal of dead trees or removal of trees posing a hazard or the pruning of trees is subject to the requirement of a development permit in order to clear clear land. Section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C subsection three states that in order in other residential districts, an owner is required to obtain a letter of determination from the department prior to the clearing of his lot. The zoning board finds this subsection to clearly require a letter of determination from the department prior to any clearing action in residential districts other than the R-three residential district. This subsection is not relevant to this case and requires no further interpretation by the zoning board because in because the instant case is concerning a parcel in non-residential district. Section one ninety-two dash one oh seven subsection C subsection four states that in all non-residential districts and residential R-three districts, site plan review by the planning board is required in order to clear land. The zoning board finds that this subsection clearly and plainly states that site plan review by the planning board is required in order to clear land in a non-resident residential district or R-three residential district. The town board intended that any clearing of living trees that is not the selective removal of trees as part of an approved forest management plan or the removal of dead trees or the removal of trees posing a hazard or the pruning of trees is subject to the requirement of a development permit in order to clear with clear land. Clearing includes the cutting of living trees because the cutting of living trees was not accepted from the definition of clearing by the town board. The zoning board drew a series of conclusions from its interpretation of plain language of town code section one ninety-two dash one oh seven, section C, in light of the fact facts and substantial evidence of record as follows. One, the town board did not include and did not intend to include the cutting of living trees as an exception to the definition of clearing. Therefore, the cutting of living trees is not an exception to the definition of clearing. It is and is included in the definition of clearing. The cutting of living trees and the manner described and shown by applicant by the applicant constitutes the removal of living trees and is squarely within the definition of clearing as defined in section one ninety-two dash one oh seven C one. The applicant's argument that stump and or root removal and or extraction is required for a clearing action to take places without merit and rejected. The town board did not conclude and did not intend to include a requirement that clearing must include stump and or root removal and or extraction. Therefore, clearing as defined in section one ninety-two dash one oh seven, section C one, does not require stump and or root removal and or extraction. The applicants or three, the applicant's argument that section one ninety-two dash one oh seven, section C is ambiguous is without merit and rejected. A plain reading of the code's language in light of the pertinent facts of the case, substantial evidence of the record and verbal comments made at the public hearing shows that the zoning board has interpreted section one ninety-two dash one oh seven, section C, exactly as the DeWitt Town Board intended it to be interpreted when the ordinance was approved in two thousand eight and as the town of DeWitt has historically interpreted this code section since its promulgation. And four, the applicant's argument that cutting of living trees is not clearing and therefore not the removal of living trees is is misguided and creates an absurd result the town board would never have intended. If the applicant's arguments are accepted, the applicant could substantially cut all trees on the property down to the stump without removal or ex- extraction of stumps and or roots in perpetuity without any site plan review or issuance of a development permit by the town. Given the facts and circumstances of this case, the substantial evidence of the record and the verbal comments made at the public hearing, the town board clearly did not intend such an absurd and unreasonable result. The applicant argues further that the notice of violation dated April fifteenth two thousand twenty-five was deficient. The zoning board disagrees and finds that the notice sent by the code enforcement officer was a clear written determination of the of the department sent to the applicant in regard to what the town code says and how it is interpreted, which the applicant understood and properly appealed to the zoning board for an interpretation. The notice is in writing, dated and signed by the code enforcement officer. It specifies the activity that violates the code, specifies the provision of the code that has code that has been violated, references a prior stop work order to reinforce the directive that all clearing activity on the site cease and asked the applicant to conduct the contact the code enforcement office as an action to compel compliance to discuss further resolution of the violation. The applicant was properly served and received the notice as evidenced by Mr. Marzucci's response letter dated May fifth two thousand twenty-five, which states an understanding and defense to the alleged activity and violation of the town code section specified in the notice. Further, the applicant appeared to clearly understand and reference and describe the notice of violation in their application and related submissions to the zoning board and evidenced a clear understanding of the written determination of the department and the issue of the case issues, excuse me, and the issues of the case in proper town code sections to appeal. and the issues of the case in proper Town Code sections to appeal in the request for interpretation. The applicant has not been deprived of any right to appeal or any opportunity to be heard by the Town of DeWitt as evidenced by these lengthy proceedings. Conclusion. The zoning board has interpreted Section one ninety-two dash one oh seven, section C, and has concluded that the applicant has engaged in the clearing of the relevant property at some point in time or at various points in time from two thousand two through two thousand twenty-four. However, the zoning board has found insufficient evidence in regard in the record to support that the applicant's specific action that was the subject of the notice of violation dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five rose to the level of clearing as defined by the Town Code and interpreted by the zoning board of appeals in this resolution. Therefore, the applicant's request for relief from the notice of violation dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five is granted. The determination made by the department and code enforcement officer and the notice of violation dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five is reversed.
Is there a motion on the second? Pass this resolution?
I make a motion.
On second. Opened by Kelly, second by Dan. I'll give a roll call. Uh, no Nick and no Josh. Um, member Dela Postup. Member Perrin.
Aye.
Member Tribette.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cornfeld.
Aye.
Chairperson O'Connor. Resolution passes five zero. And Brody will have this sent out to the applicant, to the law firm, and in any way that you request. Uh, we will do so. Done with this. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Didn't clearly state something?
Hold on, let me know if I can get Chris out of there.